Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to have everyone here with us today. It's our first meeting of the new year and we want to call the City of Franklin, City Commission to order, and this is a regular call meeting. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Wendell Stewart to open himself with a word of prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Pray with me, please. Dear Father, once again, we thank you for this opportunity to see another day. We thank you for the new year and all that it may bring. Father, we know that if we continue to carry you with us, we know that all the decisions that we make coming from one year to the next, it would be pleasing in your sight. Father, we ask you to be good stewards. We ask you for your strength and your wisdom and your courage with endeavors that we may have to face throughout this journey. Father, we just thank you for what all you have done, what all you are doing, and what all you will do. We ask you to bless each and every person that is in this room today. We ask you to bless their homes from which they come and any other extra blessing that you see fit that they deserve, and, Father, we ask you to give it to them. Father, we ask you to bless this meeting today that we will conduct the business of this community, that, first of all, that it will be pleasing in your sight. And if it is pleasing in your sight, we pray that it will touch all the people in this community for the betterment and for the good. Search our hearts for the intentions in which we make our decisions, that they will be pure and sincere. Father, again, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity for us to come together in this appointed place. Father, we just thank you once again. In your name we do pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor.
I don't believe that we have anything under here in public, but we do have a recognition, and it is one that I am going to make, and it is one that I am very proud to be able to make. I think probably most of you all know Bonnie, Bonnie Swayze. Bonnie's family and her owned Elijah's Rubber Company for many, many years and made a lot of contributions to this community when there weren't many jobs in Franklin to be had. Her family were giving people work and jobs, and I don't know of a person anywhere that deserves any more recognition than this lady does. As you know, Bonnie and I started in this office, and she, Bonnie, got behind a lot of things here in our community that we're really resenting this all today. And Renaissance is one of them, Bonnie. Our community is so proud of the things that are going on in our neighborhood, I swear. Amy Ellis has helped to take, she has helped to move that along. I had to mention her because it's weird today. But Amy helped to really take the whole of that, just like you did, and you made me the first chairman, and you were the behind-the-scenes person. You were the one that did the work. But we did get it started, and we're very proud of the work that's continuing today that you have started. Also, Bonnie, she helped with the Gallery on the Square. I can remember, I can remember many, many times going by those doors. I was right next door to her and Connie Young, and took her out as they were on their knees scrubbing those hardwood floors.
Carolyn Lando.
Carolyn Lando, that's right.
All the incarcerated victims.
But, I mean, Bonnie has done so much, so much, for her family, for this community. And I think this recognition today, the key to the city, is very appropriate for Bonnie. And I will read that in person with you. On behalf of the Franklin City Commission, I, Larry Dixon, later, present this team to the City of Franklin, Kentucky, to Bonnie Swayze. In an expression of appreciation for her outstanding contributions to the City of Franklin, as a family member of the Gallery on the Square, the Franklin Simpson Renaissance, she has made many community contributions, both personally and through her family, on business, Elijah's Rubber Company. We thank you, Bonnie, for your service and dedication to the Franklin Simpson community. Community presented this not the day of January 2023. Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you, Larry. Our family's been here since 1892, under 30 years, so this means a lot. Started with the Chamber, Renaissance, Gallery on the Square. Franklin is the greatest town ever anywhere, and a lot of it has to do with people like Randy Bennett, who go out of their way to contribute with nothing in return, not asking for anything in return. And that's why a lot of us do it, because we love Franklin. Thank you.
And Bonnie, you're welcome to stay with us if you would like. It's going to be a long meeting, or you're welcome to excuse. Under recognitions, we will move on to, I believe we have, well, we have Jackie Hutton. Jackie, I believe what we're going to do is ask you to come and give us just a brief three, four minutes.
Will you do that, Mayor?
Now, if you don't mind.
We have Officer of the Year.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Roger, sorry.
Sir.
He was testing us, he was ready. Didn't Jackie.
Mayor of the Commission, recently we handed out several awards. We had a couple of Chiefs nominations, and we had some lifesaving awards, and Kenton and I had talked, and, you know, basically, the top top awards are Officer of the Year. We started back in 2009, and basically what happens there is supervisors will make nominations for who they feel like qualified for the Officer of the Year, and then basically they give the criteria for what justifies their nomination. And before you today, we had Craig Hansen, and he was our 2022 Officer of the Year recipient. So I'm going to kind of talk about some of the things real quickly that the supervisors put in for him. Basically, they said, very seldom pay all the more. He's always punctual. He's the first one to pick up a shift or anyone to ask. Other officers trust his decision-making when supervisors are not around. He recently took over our field training program and is doing well with it. They liked the direction that he's taken in the program. Great attitude, good rapport with the community, works hard, and is very reliable. So when you think of, like, the characteristics that make a good employee, a good officer like that, that signifies that so. I'd like to recognize Officer Craig Hansen for the 2022 Officer of the Year. Craig, where are you starting? Need a 20-minute speech prepared.
Thank you. Okay, and now we'll move on to the approval of our minutes from the minutes of the December 12, 2022 regular meeting, and I'm assuming that everyone's had an opportunity to look over those, or any comments or questions.
Motion revoked.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Powell to approve those. We'll hear second. Have a second by Commissioner Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to community services. Okay, under general government, now, Jackie, we'll let you, and give us a little, that'll be discussion and possible action under the Hy-Vee sub-award agreement, and we've asked Jackie to give us just a little bit of an overview of what is going on.
Good afternoon. Glad to be here. Happy New Year. The Hy-Vee subaward agreement that you have in front of you, that's the money that Hy-Vee injects into the Franklin community to support our task force. As you remember, I came back last year and asked for an additional detective, and y'all seemed fit to give me that, or in return, Hy-Vee gave us more money to help with that. So that's more money in Simpson County and Franklin to deal with our drug problem. So that's what that sub grant is, basically, this year. That's not any money out of Franklin, that's just money, federal money coming into our community. It's just, basically, you agree to pay it, and then they reimburse. And I do all, they send me the time card, and I do all the rest as far as that goes. Very little work as far as the city goes. So I, like I said, really appreciate that, having that second officer really makes a difference. While I'm here, do y'all have any questions on this sub agreement? While I'm here, I was just going to kind of give you a little overview of what we're going on and everything. Actually, as a speaker, our guys are doing a search warrant here in the city limits, you know, for some fentanyl and some other drugs, as a speaker, they're there right now. But our nation has got a really bad drug problem right now, and a very bad fentanyl problem. You know, a few years ago, I was talking a little bit about fentanyl, getting mixed with this and that, and we talked about meth, crystal meth, and all these things. Fentanyl has actually taken over everything. There now, a lot of their just dealing kind of directly with fentanyl. Hy-Vee, you've heard on TV about rainbow fentanyl and all this stuff, that's basically where a clandestine lab has taken ingredients and pressed it into a pill. Sometimes they disguise the pills as other type of medication, like pain pills, Hypertone and whatnot, or sometimes it's some other kind of pill, but it's purely fentanyl. I've never seen the overdoses, like, we're getting now, and I say we're getting, I mean the state of Kentucky, including here and in Logan County, because it's our sister county. The problem when you take, in a clandestine lab, when you take a drug out of like fentanyl, which is, it's a painkiller, but it's really, it's more potent than morphine, a lot more potent. And they've got some legitimate uses in the hospital, but you take somebody that don't know what they're doing, and they're making a batch of what we call peel dough, which is just kind of a binder to bring everything together, and you put fentanyl in there, like, you sprinkle it in, and then you make this binder and you press it into these tablets. Well, inside that tablet, you know, when you buy an aspirin, or you buy a Algonite or whatever, that's went through so much quality control in that factory to make sure that's evenly distributed amongst that peel. Well, it's not like that. So it's like, this side of pills may have a little hot spot of fentanyl, and this side of pills may not. And what we're seeing is teenagers, or like, they will get by a pill on the street that has it, and you take one half, and I take the other, this guy's fine, this guy overdoses, or girl, either one. And we've been seeing that a lot here lately, and that's a really, really area of concern for us. And we're working on it, and we're kicking it hard, and I don't like to paint a gloom and doom picture, and the lady said this is the best place to live. Franklin's an awesome town. It's a good place to live, good people, and I'll always say that. And we're doing our job, is what I'm trying to tell you. That's what we're here for, and that's what we're doing. And we got enough control, but it's just something we're having to deal with. It's a natural crisis, not just a local crisis. So we're in a pipeline because we're so close to Nashville, we're in Nashville, Bowling Green, that's where we are. So we were in on a surveillance leak the other day, where you may have saw it on the news, where they got 80 pounds of methamphetamine in Moore County. It was our canine dog that hit on that. So that came out of, which is a big hub city for us, and 80 pounds meth, and it was destined for Bowling Green, but, I mean, that spreads in our community, so that's a concern. So anyway, that's kind of update. We're hidden, we appreciate the funding, we appreciate your support, and I'm just, like I said, I pray to this city commission, they support us, and we would appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Jackie.
Any questions you'll ask of me?
Jackie, we thank you for coming and just bringing us a report and keeping the community updated, and the job you did, you all did a good job.
Thank you, Jackie.
Roger, would you like to come and make any comments or present the motion to?
I'll present the motion for the City Commission to approve the 2023 Hy-Vee subaward agreement for the drug task force. And only another thing I'll say before we go make the motion is that, you know, Jackie's talking about it, we, you know, the lifesaving stuff, we had, you know, we had 17 last year that were fentanyl, I mean, obviously, now from PMS, you know, we brought 17 people back with our knots on, so, you know, they're out there hitting on one end, they're hitting on the other, so hopefully eventually the treatment and all that will get rectified. But that's the agreement before you.
Add to that, authorize the mayor to sign any documents necessary.
Okay, yep.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Stewart, a second by Commissioner McQuary. Is there any further comment? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you, Jackie, Roger. Next, we will move on to board appointments, and I will take that.
Mayor, there is one more. There's the city tours.
I don't know. I'm, I'm.
That's okay.
Yes, we do. We had discussion and a possible action regarding City Commission department to, and Kenton, if you would.
Absolutely.
And that's page two.
This is something we, you know, obviously, we have a new commissioner, but also thought it was maybe an opportunity for our next commission meeting, which is the 23rd, maybe start early and go through all the departments. It's been a while since we've done a tour. I was just wondering if this date and time seemed to be working, and if it is, I can schedule vehicles, and we can go to the certain departments and kind of just walk through, and that just kind of give a big update on what's going on. Any questions or thoughts or?
I have a minute. No doubt.
So I know our Trent Coffey is excited about it. He's got about a half.
He's wild.
So anyway, but I'll just go ahead and plan for that, and then, like I said, I'll lock down the details and then send you all messages where we're starting.
And we'll need no motion for that. If we're all in agreement, Kenton will just take that one.
You can call the special call to put that together, so.
Okay, okay.
On that day.
All right. Now, we will move on to board appointments, and I will take those, and I am, the following of the November, from the November election, we have several board appointments and reappointments since our commissioners serve for their elected term of office. And I would like to recommend the following appointments, and Mayor Pro Tem Jamie Powell, Boys and Girls Club Dale McQuary, the Electric Plant Board Luke Powell, the FS Ambulance Board Jennifer Dell, the Franklin Simpson Industrial Board Wendell Stewart, the FS Industrial Board Larry Dixon, and I'm a non-voting member, and the Parks Board Herbert Williams. The other members of the Parks Board would be the Freight Hold, Quentin Lineberry, and Sam Crocker. And FS Renaissance Dale McQuary, Housing Authority Larry Dixon and Gerald Ogles, and FS Code Enforcement Board to fill an unexpired term of Ron Clark would be Roy Tomer. And are there any comments or questions before we take a vote?
Mayor, I'll refrain from voting on the ambulance board at this time.
Okay, all right. And that's, because Dale still serves on the ambulance board, that's just. All in favor, then, of the board appointments, as stated, say aye.
Mayor, I move that we go with these.
Excuse me, when the motion, yes.
I move that we go with these appointed offices.
I'll second. Have a second by Commissioner Powell. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And that motion carries. And next, under general government, we'll move on to discussion and a possible action regarding a proposed ordinance, a meaning of code enforcement ordinance.
Mo is not here, so I'll take that. Commission, it is a detailed, kind of a wholesale amendment to this ordinance in your packet. These changes are the suggestion of Mo. When she came down here, she saw some holes in our ordinance from her experience, as she was a code enforcement officer in Bowling Green for years and years, and she asked for these changes. I certainly saw no issues with them whatsoever. It kind of fills in some gaps. As you all know, whenever we pass an ordinance, an ordinance is a living, breathing document, but sometimes we have to make amendments too, to make it more effective. So we wanted to bring those to you here today, just to let you know about them. We're going to present them to the code board next week. We're not here to get sponsors or anything today, just wanted to know if any of you have any comments, questions, or suggested changes, please let me know before we take them to the code board next Thursday. If not, we'll bring them back after the code board reviews them and, you know, for a vote.
And we need two sponsors.
No, no, not today, not today. The code board might decide to make some changes to them, so we'll bring them back after that.
All right, any further questions, comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to discussion and possible action regarding proposed ordinance, a meaning sewer use ordinance establishing local limits, and Scott will take that.
He's got my name on it, but I'm flushing that topic over to him. No point in doing that. Been trying to work that in this conversation.
For 20 years, I think.
Well, every five years, the State Vision Water makes us do a local maintenance study. This year, we hired Strand Engineering Group to do this study for us. And as you see in the packet, a few of the bulletins have changed, so that's why we need to make an amendment to the four use ordinance. And I mean, I guess we need two. Sponsors, yes. Two sponsors for this change, the ordinance. You have them right here. We've got Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Powell.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll be still going to do the management.
Any questions or?
Like he said, thank you, friends. Like he said, it's something we've got to do every few years.
From under general government, we will move on to discussion and a possible action regarding a proposed ordinance approving rezoning a property located on the west side of US 31W Highway South, and.
This is, yes, I'll take that, Mayor. This is, this is coming from the recommendation, unanimous recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission for rezoning the Yocley property by two of the heirs of the Yocley family. It's for the James Cook Development, and as you all know, we have discussed that previously. We just need two sponsors today, and we'll have first reading. For the record, it's Jamie Powell and Wendell Stewart, so. So Kathy can take the minutes later, she'll watch this.
Put the handrail up.
Sorry.
This ordinance?
Yes.
Y'all have to forgive me, I can't hear very well, so I may go, oh.
We will move on then to discussion and possible action regarding the proposed ordinance approving the bond covenant lease agreement for the Franklin Police Department, and I believe Carol's here to bring that to us.
I did. Remember, back in November, we approved the contract for this station to be flooreded, and then in December, we signed the resolution to start that timeframe and start capturing those costs that we could use the bond for, as we agreed in the budget agreement to finance $4 million as part of that funding. So the next step in that process, we've got documents here that we received from KLP, Scott has reviewed them, and this is the ordinance that needs to be put into place to allow us to get that lease agreement approved by the mayor and all the other documents. There's a draft included, we'll have, have to have first and second reading and advertise it, and then we'll do a closing on that lease agreement. Any questions or comments? All right, I request that we have two commissioners sponsor this ordinance today.
You have, right, yeah.
Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Wade.
Thank you, Carol. We'll move on to public safety, utilities. We have Trent here for discussion or possible action regarding flow monitoring and modeling of collection.
You know, well, well, the developments that are occurring, gun up here in the city, we were working with Hard Wagon Solutions Engineering Group to develop a wastewater system model. Waste water system model helps identify the areas that need rehab, those that are not having the capacity to handle water elements, et cetera. Flow monitoring and waste system was the first step, and that is now completely completed. And the next step in that process is data collection, manholes lined, et cetera. Due to the fading during the flow monitoring phase, we can continue the second phase and still remain under the same original budget amount. So I'd like to recommend the City of Franklin allowing Hard Wagon Solutions to do the data collection step and wastewater system modeling, have the mayor sign all necessary documents.
And he just, Trent just stated, this is in our budget.
Yeah, it's already budgeted.
Yeah, the original contract for the flow monitoring was the $450,000. We spent about $270 of that, and then that step three, or what task three was going to be pushed off, and this 104 will take, so we have more than that left in the original budget.
I'll make that motion. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Powell. Do I have a second by Commissioner McQuary? Any further questions or comments?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
Now, this, the flow, just, I guess when we speak this language sometimes, and you could spend some money, some of us watching this probably have no clue. Now, this flow monitoring that we're talking about, is this, is it, will this, is this to help monitor the wastewater, I mean, the sewer water?
Just a, just a brief description. So what you need to do is you need to prioritize areas where we have the most inflow and infiltration into the sewer lines. What you do is you flow meter throughout the collection system, I think we did 22 different locations, and then you identify the areas where you are getting the most inflow and infiltration, which allows us to build a model, which is what we're working on now. In addition, it allows the City of Franklin to prioritize where they spend the money on rehabilitation, so that you're not, you're rehabbing the areas that most need.
Okay.
Does that make a little bit?
Well, I think we talked about this before, didn't we?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, that's what I thought we did. We talked about this, this is to help offset the possibility of this water that comes back up into the streets on 31W, places like that, created so much conversation during the election and stuff, right?
Right. It's a total system wide analysis, because downstream structure can be impacted by all of the upstream structures, so if you just repair a singular location, it will not take care of the overall underlying problem. This kind of study gives you where the underlying problems are, and then you can focus on those, which may result in you not having to do downstream structure rehab.
This is a more affordable solution for now, anyway, because we talked about.
It's certainly more efficient use of funding.
Yes, okay. Good choice of words. I'm done, thank you, Trent, okay.
Any further questions or any further comments? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passes unanimously. Now, we'll move on to ordinances, and.
I think I'm supposed to take over for Kathy.
One more page, one more two.
Speaking of flushing things down the hill, it's getting late. All right, the first ordinance is ordinance number 2022-26, an ordinance of the City of Franklin, Kentucky, creating a new zoning district entitled Single Family Residential Affordable Housing District R-1S-AH Zone. And because this is second reading, we will need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
A motion?
So moved, Mayor.
A motion?
So moved, Mayor.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Powell, and we'll have a roll call vote. Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuary?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
And my vote's a yes and that motion carries, Scott.
Next will be second summary reading of ordinance number 2023-001. An ordinance rezoning approximately 82.519 acres on the westerly side of Grace Road from I-2 Heavy Industrial to R-1S Single Family Residential and rezoning approximately 8.830 acres from I-2 to R-4 Multi-Family High Density Residential District as requested by Joel and Hilda Cook. And we will need a motion, a second, and have a roll call vote again.
I'm going to take the motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Williams. Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Stewart, and we'll have a roll call vote.
I'd be happy to do it. Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuary?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And that one passes unanimously. Next will be second summary reading of ordinance number 2023-002. This is an ordinance of the city of Franklin, Kentucky, approving an amended memorandum of understanding and interlocal cooperation agreement for providing and funding school resource officers for each school in the Franklin Simpson school system. It meets your approval, we need a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
So moved. So moved by Commissioner Powell?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams.
Roll call vote is Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuary?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
That one passes unanimously as well. Give me one second. Next will be second summary reading of ordinance number 2023-003. An ordinance annexing to the city of Franklin, Kentucky, approximately 26 acres located on the west side of Blackjack Road, which is Kentucky Highway 1171 South, in accordance with the comprehensive plan of annexation. And if this meets the commission's approval, again, we'll need a motion, a second, and have a roll call vote.
Take the motion.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Powell?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McQuary?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Dixon?
Yes.
Once again, it passes unanimously. All right, next we'll need, this will be first summary reading of ordinance number 2023-004. An ordinance of the city of Franklin, Kentucky, amending the sewer use ordinance and user charge system. First reading requires no vote or no other action. Next is possible first reading of ordinance number 2023-005. An ordinance rezoning approximately 30.932 acres on the westerly side of US 31W from Ag Agriculture to B-4 Highway Business District, rezoning approximately 81.978 acres from Ag Agriculture to R-1S Single Family Residential and rezoning two parcels of approximately 12.038 acres and 16.258 acres from Ag Agriculture to R-4 Multi-Family High Density Residential District as requested by Lucy Y. Stoner and Becky Y. Cerse. Once again, first reading requires no action or any further fanfare. Let me get to the last one, maybe. Now I know why Kathy wasn't here today. Possible first reading, or first reading of ordinance number 2023-006. An ordinance approving a lease agreement for the financing of a project, providing for the payment and security of the lease, creating a sinking fund and authorizing the execution of various documents related to the lease. Again, first reading requires no other actions. These were either first or second summary readings of the ordinances of the city of Franklin, Kentucky. The full text of the ordinance is available on the city website or at the office of the city clerk. They will be available on the website upon passage and approval. I think I did all that right, so with that, we'll move on.
You did get a good workout today.
Remind me to have a little chat with Kathy.
From that, we will move now on to executive session. And under executive session will be litigation, which will be discussion on a proposed or pending litigation under KRS 61-8101C. And also personnel, that'll be discussion or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline or dismissal of an individual employee or member under KRS 61-8101F. And also business, which will be discussion between a public agency and a representative of a business entity concerning a specific proposal for open discussion which jeopardize the siting, retention, expansion, or upgrading of the business. And that's under KRS 61-8101G. And I will need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second. Second by Dale McQuary. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And we will now move into executive session. I will need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved, Mayor.
A motion by Commissioner Williams, a second.
Second.
Second by Dale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now out of the executive session and we will, Scott, do you have any reports?
Nothing but welcome to our new city commissioner, Dale McQuary.
How about city menu?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Stewart?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner McQuary?
Nothing.
Commissioner Williams?
Don't have any.
Commissioner Powell?
I have a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Powell, a second.
Second, Mayor.
Have a second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, aye.
Aye.